Good evening and welcome to the April 15, 2015 Board of Education meeting. We've been in executive session since 6:00 PM to discuss district litigation and an individual's educational program. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm glad to see we have a lot of students here tonight, and I believe we probably have some seniors that are participation in government students. Do we have any of those here tonight? Okay, couple. Your requirement is to stay till 9 o'clock. If the meeting's still going on at 9, we'll take a break. You'll need to come up and sign out on the sign-out sheets, and if you have forms that you need any board members to sign, we'll do that. If the meeting gets done before 9, then you'll do that at that time. Introductions?
Diane Stever.
Christine Beck.
Lynn Lenhart.
Jody Monroe.
Tom Douglas.
Matt Downey.
Joanne Cunningham.
Michael Cooper.
And Judy Keigho.
And Charmaine, which has had a medical procedure today and isn't here with us, so we wish her well. Next up is the approval of the minutes of the March 31, 2015 Regular Board of Education meeting.
So moved.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions, any negatives that carries? Number two, the Student Senate report. Do we have a representative from the Student Senate here tonight to give us an update?
We may not, just because this is a special meeting.
Because, yeah, meeting, and we had a meeting a week ago. Okay. The Superintendent's report.
Well, thank you, President Downey. We have several things to go through this evening, but just let me start with three. Just the other, yesterday, the district was notified that Ms. Heather Porter, a 10th grade lab school student here at BC, was just named one of the 2015 Jason Learning National Argonauts. This summer, Heather will embark on a life-changing journey where she will be offered a chance to work side-by-side with scientists and engineers in the field. In 2014, only 11 students and educators were selected for the program in total. And since 1990, Jason's National Argonaut Program has engaged over 460 students and educators. Heather is the only student, I believe, this year chosen from New York State and potentially nationally. And it's a wonderful program that's something that the New York State Council of School Superintendents are looking at and sponsoring throughout New York State, and we're also exploring on whether or not next year we may receive a free one-year service of this learning program, and that's in the hands for a review of our Science Chair, Ms. Jen Gagne, for either the middle school or the high school. So it's part of our STEM education initiative, and the reason why Bethlehem is being viewed for this additional service is because the sponsor of it is Ms. Molly Hunter, who is the daughter of Bethlehem Central High School's former principal, John Hunter. And I've been working with her for the past year, and she said, "What a better way to use her sponsorship to come back home to her district," and at such a nice time where one of our students is being honored and selected. So we will bring Heather out another evening. We just didn't have a chance. But I believe she was being told last night is what I was told, so I didn't want to spoil the surprise either. So congratulations to Ms. Porter.
That's great.
Additionally, for members of the Board of Education, a couple of years ago, we started a annual school safety review with our Utica National Insurance Company for Bethlehem Central, and I want to commend Greg Nulty as well as Ms. Judith Keigho because they placed it upon their responsibilities to conduct these safety reviews. And I believe it was yesterday or Monday?
Monday.
Monday. The district was awarded its plaque for school safety, an excellent award from Utica National for meeting a certain percentage points of safety checklists and items that are evaluated each year, so the school district can also use that as a reference point of how to improve. I believe we're at the titanium level, which is the second-to-best level. I think platinum is just above that. And with the platinum also comes a sponsorship of, I believe, a $500 check to each district. So we're gaining each year on that ground, and we're also seeing areas where we can improve upon, and that's leading to some of our discussions with our safety plan. So Ms. Keigho, if you can extend, I think Greg's here as well, right?
He should be here. He's going to present later.
So, yeah, I'm glad. So I want to thank all of you for all your hard work and everybody that put in to making that review possible throughout the past couple of years. And this is the second time we've received this award, so congratulations. And this next award is something that although we're still in the infancy stage of an implementation process of our student portal and teacher management software, is the 2015 Aspen District of the Year Award. And over this past break, a team from Bethlehem Central led by Mr. Sal D'Angelo, and I know Ms. Lynn Sherrick and Bruce Turck, but also some of our administrators, I believe it was Ms. Claus, Mr. Klugman, and Mr. Landry, that went to the training, yearly training, for all Aspen participants, and they were surprised with this award. And what this award really means is that Aspen has recognized us as a district to watch because of our implementation schedule that we put in, our plan and process that we're putting in place that are, extend beyond just one year, but over multiple years, and some of the best practices that have been established here by the administration, faculty, and staff to make Aspen more seamless as we go through the implementation process. And it's very nice that that company has used us as pretty much one of their new aspects of how to do an implementation and training very successfully. So Sal, on behalf of myself, the Board of Education, thank you for all your leadership, as well as everything that all the team has done as well. So thank you. Well, it could get hot in here, because this is the most amount of people, I think. I should have moved this to the auditor, to the cafeteria. It would be a little cooler. But this is a great night to recognize a lot of hard work. Last time, we were recognizing at the high school. This meeting allows us to recognize some of our elementary and middle school students for such wonderful successes that they've had. And at this time, I'd like to call up Mr. Dave Kazadznek to recognize the Hammergrill Odyssey of the Mind students.
Do you want him to use the mic?
Yes, if you can use the mic.
Well, you can use one.
Use the mic in the middle?
We'll have you back and forth, Dave. Back and forth.
Here, I'll hold.
You used them steel.
Well, good evening, and I'm very proud to be here to represent Hammergrill Elementary School and recognize our wonderful Hammergrill Odyssey of the Mind teams. I do want to also thank the parents who helped out with their time and resources to help make your children so successful. So thanks to our parents as well. We had three teams who participated in the Odyssey program. All three teams finished number one in Region 7. Then they moved on to the state competition. Our teams performed very well, with one of them will be moving on to the Worlds in Michigan, at Michigan State University, in East Lansing at Memorial Day weekend. So again, congratulations to those students. And we will call up our elementary team that solved Problem 1 in Division 1. This is the team that is going to the Worlds. I'd like to, come on up, please, Carolyn Riley, Teddy Shaw, Charlie Blanchard, Lilly Bider, Claire Peretta, and Kiki Baum. Come on up, please.
Dave, you should be in there, too.
The next team that we will recognize tonight is our Problem 3, Division 1 team. Again, they came in first in Region 7 and third in the states, so I'd like to bring on up now Mr. Dewey Mung, Daniel Joe, Eliza Cotton, Abe Kaufman, Claire Smith, Megan Delumball, and Nathaniel Koplek. Come on up, please. Good job, guys. The parent coaches, come on up, please. Good job, Gus. We're going to get a nice picture taken now. You ready? And next up, we have our team that solved Problem 5. Now, this one is, yeah, Problem 5, Division 1. I'd like to recognize tonight Sage Obernesser, Henry Reichman, Caitlin Roddy, Ethan Rosenbloom, Becca Scheingold, Emma Van Leuven, and Juliette Van Leuven. And the parent coaches, if you can come up, too. Congratulations, guys. Job well done. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Congratulations, guys. And congratulations to our Hammergrill teams, and all the best in the upcoming Worlds.
So this fall, a couple of parents came to me, and they wanted to put together an Odyssey of the Mind team for Elsmere. The only problem was they weren't too sure if they would get enough students for it. Elsmere had never done Odyssey before, participated in it. And not only were they enough, did they get enough participation to have one team, they actually had two teams. So I'm very proud of these children and their families for working so hard. I would like to call up our first team, and they worked on Pandora's Box, Problem 3, Division 1, Matthew Collins. Claire Riley. Cameron Smith. William Wu. And Logan Yohi. Oh, and the parents, please.
Coach's parents, come on up. And our second team, and their problem was silent movie. We had Sarah Cohen.
Maxwell Gold. Drew Kindland. Colin King. Erin Mash. Ben Sorrentino. And Maggie Walters. And their parents, too, please, and coaches. I should also add that our teams are only 3rd and 4th graders, no 5th graders, but they had a wonderful time. Even though they didn't win this year, they're already gearing up for next year.
Good job.
also recognizing a lot of our academic competitors. We have a number of different competitors that have done things in almost every academic discipline, and our success continues. We've had teams that have made Nationals and Regionals, and you'll see from the number of students that we're honoring tonight, we're very proud of all of our kids, primarily not because of their success. And I want to make a distinction on that for our students. We talk a lot in the middle school about the only failure is a failure to try. And sometimes, the hardest part about competing is the failure to even put, stick your foot in the water kind of thing. So when you're doing a spelling bee, or you're doing a history bowl, or a geography bee, it takes a lot of courage to take that first step. And what we're enormously proud of is that these guys not only take that first step, but they do very well when they do it. So congratulations to all of our awardees tonight. We're going to start with our geography bee winners. So congratulations to the following three students, Aaron Davis, Jimmy Mahar, and Eddie Stevens. Guys, I'm going to ask you to stand up here. Do you want to stand right over here? And we're going to call all of our students up from each of the different competitions, because we do have some repeat winners. From our history bee, I'd like to congratulate Brody Daniels, Aaron Davis again, Jimmy Mahar again, and you can all say this one with me if you'd like. I've known Navid for a few years now, because he's been with me in chess clubs, so I've had a lot of practice. Navid Mazadaba De Farahani.
Matthew Bayne in Connecticut on the first night. Say your name in Connecticut.
Our history bowl team, and by the way, a lot of these students are not done yet. We have students that are going to Connecticut for history challenges. Some of these guys are headed down to Washington DC. Is that correct, guys?
Yeah.
Right? So we're still going. So congratulations to our history bowl team. We have Samuel Cooper, Michael Fishburne, Navid, you ready? This is a chorus, Mazadaba De Farahani, and Aaron Meisner. Our middle school Odyssey of the Mind team, again, Problem 3, Division 2, did great this year. Just finished out of the running for the Nationals, so hopefully they'll all be back again next year. We have Faith Adamczyk, Megan Fallon, Morgan Leonard, Aiden McNehey, Taylor Roddy, Gillian Roder, and Jamie Smith. I was just asking, before I get to the Science Academic Bowl, there is one other person that I'd like to recognize, who really is behind the scenes, helping out, guiding, and supporting a lot of our Odyssey teams, and I don't know if she's here tonight. Is Ms. Betsy Guma stop here tonight?
Yeah.
So I'd like, just to quickly, Betsy has had two students go through Odyssey. She remains and is a guide for all of our teams and coaches. She sets up a lot of the practice competitions that they run, and she wants no applause, no acclaim whatsoever, but she is kind of our rock behind the scenes, helping all of our teams. So thanks to Betsy. Oh, I'm sorry. We did that. Yep. All right. So our Science Academic Bowl team, who, by the way, came in second place and was one question away from going to Nationals. So we're ready for next year. Govanchari, Zachary Fisk, Kevin Lynn, Avi Patel, and Maggie Schway. And our spelling bee competition winners, Liam Carl, Tyler Lipold, Navid Mazadaba De Farahani, and Catherine Van Leuven. I'd like to give another shout-out to Tyler at the BOU Spelling Bee. We used him as our phone of friends, so it came in handy. Our Regional History Day, this is a National History Day project where students, through our social studies program, set up all kinds of different projects. And there's a great diversity and wealth of, they can do a webpage, they can do a skit, they can do a, what, like a diorama, they can do a poster presentation. And all of these students not only did very well in their school-based competition, they went to the State Museum on a weekend, a few weekends ago, did very well there, and we have some that are actually going to the States in a few weeks. So congratulations to Aaron Burns, Kelly Cusack, Olivia Namcoon, PJ Namcoon, Nalan Nigam, and Liz Vaskatellis. Ladies and gentlemen, a warm round of applause for all of our middle school competitors. Parents, if you'd like, if there are any parents that want to come forward and take a picture of the group, please do now. If you could stay right there. We're going to separate the picture a little. If we can get Middle School Odyssey of the Mind, the first come up. And we'll do it. Just Middle School Odyssey, and parents. By the way, if coaches are here, we'd love to have you in the picture, too.
Just ride the bus.
Just ride the bus, right?
And that's a lot to be said, because I can't see over the door. I can see it in front of you. You can still get it.
Mike, if you could call out the next group to come over, just if you can go through that.
Let's do Science Academic Bowl next.
Spelling bee, guys, come on over. Spelling bee, Navid, come on over. Spelling bee, guys, come on over. Spelling bee, Navid, come on over.
But I mean, we need to know that. I don't want to be, we must go, we're going to just do this. Right, we don't. I don't, I went to the other, I couldn't have gotten a name without one, but.
I'm going to miss it this year. I, you know, never miss it.
I hope they might not only use a flash, or it'd be like seeing stars.
I spoke to someone.
Oh, no, we don't. It was just, wow, of course, I spread. I'm going to miss, I'm going to miss the picnic on Friday morning, too. I mean, the breakfast, which is, of course, I've been used. I was the only one there, so I don't really feel too bad.
Oh, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board, there are many happenings going on, especially now that a little warmer weather has been here for about a week. We're hoping construction gets under full scale in the next couple of weeks especially, and we'll be having presentation shortly on that. This concludes my remarks at this point of the Superintendent's report for this special board meeting. So thank you very much for everybody that participated.
Thank you, Dr. Douglas. And on behalf of the entire board, we really congratulate all the students and the staff and the parents that worked with them. It's quite an accomplishment for everyone that was here tonight. So again, congratulations to them all. Well, the Board of Education report at this time. Who'd like to start? Lynn, you got something this week for us?
Well, I was trying to remember whether I mentioned last time, but I think it was right after our last meeting intended Dare graduation at Hammergrill. And it really was a great program. Jody was there, and we, and half the police department. No, actually, there were like six members of the police department there. But the kids were wonderful, and the kids that wrote the essays did a really great job. And it was an impressive little ceremony. Enjoyed it.
And I believe, so the board knows, I think April 29 will be Eagles.
Eagle. Yeah, we got that announcement today on our emails. Yes, Mike?
Last Wednesday and today, I did two of the NISBA online webinars. Last week's was an overview of the state budget, and today's was about child abuse in schools. So I have the materials if anybody on the board's interested. The one today was particularly interesting, and one of the handouts was an overview of things to look for in terms of trying to find, assess who might be an abuser. Unfortunately, we've had a recent personal experience with this, because my nephew goes to Bronx Science and is on the speech and debate team, and the beloved history teacher and coach of that team was recently arrested for online predatory behaviors. So thankfully, my nephew was not a victim of him, but it's still been devastating for all the students in the school, because this was an educator they revered and looked up to, and now they're having to deal with the reality of what he was doing. So you just can never be too cautious about what's going on with people. So if you're interested in any of those materials, I can send them to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, actually, I have all webinars that NISBA does, I have in board docs, in my library and board docs. But I'm not sure how I can transfer them.
I don't know.
That I have to find out, but I do have them all, so.
It'd be interesting, as we ship the board docs, to see if, as we do that, we could always have that, because the webinars sometimes are because of the time that you have.
And the state aid one.
And the state aid one was favored, they did an excellent job.
When they do the webinar, there's a link on the page that you can download the materials while you're watching or listening to the webinar. So, that's how I was able to get ahold of them today.
But it's sometimes nice to be able to actually watch it, you know, watch the whole thing, as opposed to just the written materials.
No, the only thing I was going to say, well, first, our board meetings are so much more fun when there's such a big, fun, lively crowd, and they've all left, and I know, I'm sure all of you share the feelings, but wow, it really is a proud moment as a board member when you see what we just saw, all these, you know, young kids, and it was all really on academics, which, you know, we often have the sports teams in, and that's a great accomplishment, and we, you know, recognize the theater and the, you know, music and all that, but wow, that was just a real blockbuster showcase of academic success that really makes me proud to be a board member. I know it makes us all proud, and I'm sorry they all left because it was much more fun having such a crowd here.
It would have been nice to be able to say something to them while they were still here, because even, you know, the support of the parents, too, as coaches, really, I think you've done that in the past, that really adds to the whole picture, too, you know, the support team, you know, both the school, the teachers, and the parents, along with the student interest in doing those projects, those problems.
Well, maybe some of them will watch the video because they were here.
And they don't stop watching it when they left.
And we had a large group of students last week go to Italy, and I saw tweets and Instagrams, and everybody had a fabulous time, and I'm super jealous, but we're very fortunate that we have the opportunity to have students go. So, next year is Germany, is that?
I think it's Germany.
Germany, Espain.
Yeah.
And then South Africa after that.
Wow. Yeah. And Mr. Lewis did a tremendous job, and all the chaperones, I mean, the chaperones were also posting pictures and Facebook, I mean, you did feel a little sad you weren't there. Really got a sense that they had an unbelievable time.
Anyone else, anything? Okay. Moving on, next is our presentations. We have two tonight. We're going to have a construction update by Mr. Greg Nolte, and then we'll have the, another presentation on where we're at with our budget discussions.
I actually thought all the kids were here to see my presentation tonight. Happy spring. It's been a long, long winter. Contractors with the project have been very eager to get back to work. Okay, we've shown you this slide before, I thought I'd just, all right, is somebody messing with me? All right. As the board may recall, the project has a total construction cost of about $17.6 million. We are carrying about a, hold on a second here, about a $1 million contingency fund in the project, which represents about 6% of the overall project. We are about 65% complete with the project right now, and we have slightly over about $550,000 of contingency remaining. That is a good thing, okay? We are actually doing very well with that. We, I did, we are presenting some change orders at the next board meeting, so this number right here, the 462,000, actually includes those change orders that are being presented to the board next week. Okay. And then. Greg, can you also go into about the PTA donation, that that still is available funding for this year before we close out our budget? Yes. We had two donations from Elsmere and Glenmont PTAs for the playgrounds, and that's included there. And that's, that's still available. We as well built in about $200,000 in allowances in the seven contracts that we have, and of that, it doesn't change contract price, and with that, we have about $30,000 of that remaining. We will use that before we go into change orders. So, there's about $35,000, $30,000 remaining in that. I'm going the wrong way. Okay, I thought I'd give you the anatomy of our change orders. This represents about the $462,000 of change orders that we had to date. I'll go around, I'll go around the pie here, basically. Number one, it represents field conditions, that's basically unforeseen. As an example, we opened up, we opened up middle school bathrooms, and there was asbestos on some piping, so we had to remove it. You weren't able to see it, an unforeseen condition. Number two is skewed a little bit, which indicates owner requests, it's another category that we have of the five. This is skewed primarily because of a change order happening next week of about $167,000 for paving and transportation, okay? We feel the transportation, paving along the backside was an alternate that we did not accept at time of bid. However, the contractor held his price, and we feel comfortable in proceeding with that. That is a very high need for that department and its impacts on the buses. Okay? Errors, which is over here, which is hard to see, we haven't had any errors, so that's zero. Omissions, omissions is something, as an example, transportation has a new bay going in there, they put an overhead door in with an opener, but the architects didn't design to have electric to that opener, so we had to basically get with the electrical contractors, say, you know, bring electric there, and so that represents about 21% of this pie. And then the last is a good thing, and it's not necessarily represented here, but this is value engineering. We've done this throughout the project. An example of this is transportation, we're putting cameras up. It was designed to put these cameras on new poles around the, around the site. We decided, you know, can we put these on the existing light poles? And that saved us a good amount of money, so that's value engineering. Doesn't change the scope or the concept of what we're trying to do, but it saves us money. Any questions?
Greg, I just wanted to say that at the facilities meeting yesterday, we did discuss the omissions, because there was, you know, some concern about the, not a large number of things that were omitted in the designs, but there were a few things that we saw consistently over the change orders we were reviewing, and Greg gave us some insight into how we will be discussing that with the architect and the vendors as the project goes on, so hopefully we'll be able to recoup some of the overage that we're incurring because it wasn't in the original plans.
Yeah, omissions are, they're a part of every, every design, as much as they go through their QA QC process, things get missed, okay? So, you know, right now, at about, you know, 0.6%, that's, that's not bad. We will evaluate as we get towards the end of the project to determine, you know, whether or not we want to talk to the architect at all. But right now, it's been relatively minimal, as far as that goes.
There's still this difference between finding asbestos, you know, in the bathroom because you can see it, and putting an electric door opener and not.
It seems pretty simple, doesn't it?
It does. Even I could figure that one out.
And then, and this is why we track them, because the architects don't like seeing this, because it's a reflection on the quality of their work.
Can I just ask, it might be a dumb question. We built the playgrounds already at Glenmont and Elsmere, so why is that $175,000 still available?
Junie?
It's really just showing that it's a source of funding for the program, because we had those donations, we could reduce the amount that we needed to borrow, so it's still part of our overall project.
Okay, so it's not available in the sense that it's, we can expend those funds?
No, it's still available.
Well, in overall, big picture. In reality, those funds have already been allocated.
Right, they're allocated.
Okay.
Okay, I thought I'd give you a brief, because we are doing very well with our contingency, as part of the original project that was bid out as an alternate that we did not accept at that time, we are deciding to go out to rebid on the middle school egress. This is just a rendition of the design. So, I have a schedule here. We're looking to advertise on May 6th, receive bids on the 27th. If the bids are favorable, and the board decides we'd like to award on June 3rd, utilizing our contingency monies, and then we're estimating construction, and it's probably a little conservative of October 29th.
That looks kind of big. Does this go down to the canteen or the pit?
Yes, the two stairwells going out of the pit. Yep, that's.
Sort of mirrors the window alignment.
But it seems to come out a lot.
Yeah, and we are very restrictive here. The other entrance or exit to the pit is down here. We're actually going to be having a tunnel going along the front of the building, and then coming up stairs, kind of coming up, and it's just, they required, you're down so far, and you got to come up so far, and it's just.
I hope it gets drawn to scale.
We'll have other computer rays.
Hopefully it's not drawn to scale.
Yeah, because it looks like it comes off a big ledge.
Looks as big as those windows.
Right, maybe that's just.
That's what you were looking at, right?
And the original bid, was it just costs that was a concern, or was it?
Well, you know, we wanted to carry that million dollar contingency because you just don't know that, like I said, that represented about 6% of the construction budget. Typically, we'd probably be a little more comfortable carrying about 10% because you just don't know. Now that we are 65% complete with the project, and we did an assessment of the potential unknowns that we may encounter, we feel, we feel comfortable releasing some of those funds to do some work with it. Okay, I have some nice photos for you. Work, sorry, work has started. The pool, actually, the high school pool is closed down. You see in the front that they are starting to remove this, this entire window wall. And there's the side, they're going to continue on. The technology is Sal, all right, somebody's messing with me. High school technology, a lot of these racks are containing various ports for our cameras. The high school, middle school, the camera installation is substantially complete. Transportation is about 50% in ONM, they have not started yet, but there's been a lot of work with the IT department and coordination of all the wiring that has to happen, and where does it have to go, and what ports and what racks these need to go on, so.
Is that in the room over here? Where's this located?
There, there's probably about eight different closets within the high school that we're going to have racks, and then I believe that the head end or the main server is going to be within Sal's area.
Main service is in the top of the conference room, in the conference area. That particular room is down the hall, right, almost where the meeting.
You'll see these around the school, this is a typical camera.
Nice product placement.
Yes. I wasn't intentional. And we actually did some tests of the quality of the picture that we're going to get, and I was very, very impressed with the quality of the picture that these cameras do provide. And again, I think the intent is not to have this system up and operational until next year.
And they will be all the monitors for all the cameras at one central location where they can be monitored, if some incident happened in the building, we'd be able to.
This is web-based, so, you know, we can, we provide certain authorization levels, and the principal can view cameras, superintendent, anybody that we give access to. Basically, if someone is not going to be sitting there monitoring it, it's more as recovery information.
But it sounds, it actually sounds better than one central location, it sounds better that if something happened in the building away from where a central monitor might be, that people would still be able to access it through the web and.
Correct.
Okay, good. Police.
Make it accessible to them home, like principals at their home?
Yes.
Yeah, good.
So, we still have a lot of work to do as far as our procedures and. The high school has an entire, entirely new clock system, I think there's something automatic going on here, but that, that's, oh, she's killing me, all right. Standard clock, this is a master clock. It's up there on the wall. It's, it's, it's a master clock system. If we need to change time for daylight savings time, it's something that's very, very easy to do.
Papers on the mouse, that's why it's moving, I think. That's what you're doing.
Thank you. So, that system, we had some difficulties with tying it into our bell system, but I think we're, we're beyond that. Let's go back. Okay, the stadium, we've been working, site contractor's been back for about two and a half weeks. There still was work, not just the resurfacing of the track, but there's other work to do within, within the stadium field. In front of the bleachers, we had that peystone, we're getting rid of all that and putting pavement. So, this is all prepped and ready for asphalt, and I think it'll be asphalt shortly, once the plants open up. This is a new skinned shop put area, it was done this spring, very stone, it's a very hard stone, compacted surface that they will throw these shop puts on. Middle school bathrooms, we are in our third set, and actually have completed our third set of bathrooms, and they have already been turned back to the middle school. Middle school outside, there's a lot of miscellaneous site work going on. This is a new entrance to the rear receiving area. They were pouring a concrete pad, and then eventually they'll do the sidewalk to that entrance. Transportation, this is the addition, the overhead door was going in, as well, you see it being painted, and this is going quick. And there is a typical exterior camera that you'll see at transportation, and then as well around the high school. Earlier, I mentioned the area at transportation that's going to be paved. I apologize for this. This is the area in the back. This was all put in during the last bond, however, back then, we couldn't afford to pave it, so that's what that alternate is for. Glenmont sidewalks, and I again apologize, we're done over break, and there's still some more site work to do. We're trying to pick away anything that we can do during the school year. This isn't all the items, but I thought I'd just highlight some of the major items that we're going to be doing once summer hits, if not before. So, you're going to have major kitchen renovations at the middle school, Hammersgrill, and Elsmere. We still have floor tile abatement, we did a lot last summer. We have a lot more here to do at the high school, pretty much D Wing and the two wings at Elsmere, the classroom wings there. And included in that renovation, a lot of classrooms, as well as what we're doing in those classrooms is putting in ADA bathrooms. The high school, a lot of window replacement, as I mentioned, and you saw earlier is the pool. Gym floor refinishing, we did the gym A here this past summer, and we're going to be doing Slingerlands and Hammersgrill this summer, and Glenmont gets actually a whole new floor, okay? And they will be very happy about that. High school site work, you see the dirt, the big dirt pile out there, a lot of work going on, we're coordinating quite a bit with athletics, with PE, to make sure we try to minimize disruption, and it's a big disruption to them. So, we've had a lot of meetings on that, and the contractor's on site, and we'll work on that. So, as well, I'll mention the track specifically, we are waiting for warm weather, the frost is out of the ground. I know that Len Keys had six calls on Monday saying it's warm, how come we're not resurfacing the track, okay? Well, it was supposed to rain on Tuesday, and we just need some consistent days of warmth and dryness, and then Copeland Coating, who finishes this track, just needs about four or five days to complete it, so.
And also, if you can, Greg, not only is it the rain, but we need low wind. In the past week, even though we've had nice days, we've had high wind volume, to the point that it turned one of our field goals out on the football field that will be readdressed, so.
Roofing, we did a lot last year as well, but we still have some minor work to do, high school, Glenmont and Slingerlands, masonry restoration, we're going to hit some of this stuff during the day, or during school day, however, a lot of this is going to happen during the summer at those schools. The equipment storage building at. The equipment storage building at O&M is going to be started around May 1. And transportation, we talked about the paving and there's still the completion of the maintenance bay, which is moving forward. So, there you go. Any questions?
Yes, Joanne.
So, if we have, we have $550,000 remaining in contingency. So, at the end of all this, there'll be some contingency left, none left? What happens then? What do we, what are the options?
One of the things is we have a number of alternatives-
Right, so we're there first.
-that are out there. We will review each of those. Like, the entrance to the pit is not priced out yet.
Okay.
That is going to have a larger cost. So, that's where a good portion, probably almost 25 to 40% of it-
$300,000 maybe.
...will probably go to that. Then what happens is you still go slow and methodically trying to make sure that you get to a point where you know you have no more undiscoverables, where you won't have to rely on change orders. You make sure your change order table is pretty much exhausted. You don't have outstanding potential change orders. And then you start looking at, can we complete some of the alternate work we intended to try to stay under budget or be right on budget?
Okay, so that's kind of the plan? You just go to all-
We're managing that as we go with each facility meeting.
Does that all come back to the board for decision-making about those, or that's sort of, you know, you're looking at what was already part of the plan as the, you know, list of things we'll do if we-
We're primarily looking at the plan. That's what the facility committee discusses. And then, we make the change order recommendation. That's where the board would have its discussion.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Thank you, Greg. And I would say one thing to the public too, is that, as already mentioned by Greg and Dr. Douglas, that the track and the football field are not open, and to please do not go on them until they're turned over by the contractor to us. They're still their responsibility. We want to make sure that there's no issues with any type of warranty or anything. And the gates should be locked, and if they're locked, it doesn't mean you jump over the fence or anything. Please do not, do not use the track because we don't want to jeopardize anything with that. And they'll be done as soon as they can physically be done.
And those cameras will be pointed to.
Yeah. I mean, it's nice and everybody's out starting to run and whatnot, and unfortunately, it's not available yet, but it will be soon.
Our next presentation is really our 2015-16 budget overview. And we had our discussions through our presentation nights, as well as our discussion night on the 31st. With this special meeting tonight, it's really trying to bring more closure to the potential recommendations. So, we put together this presentation to go through some of the items that we've already gone through. We'll go through them a little faster just because of the fact, we don't want to keep repeating the same information that has been repeated over the past probably five board meetings, so. Tonight's agenda will be just, again, a quick follow-up on state aid updates and our overall revenue picture, which is much more positive than we would have imagined. And that is helpful. Then a review of any alternatives that were requested by the board at the last meeting on the 31st. And then, any discussion and/or budget adoption or budget adoption discussion for the following board meeting, which would be next Tuesday night on the 21st. And that is the night that we must have a budget adopted, as well as approved the state fiscal report card. And then, we'll just end up, as we always do, with what are the dates of the future meetings. So, to start off, the state aid and over and over, revenue view, I'll turn it over, and we'll sort of tag-team throughout the presentation where appropriate to Ms. Kehoe.
As we had noted, we were very fortunate that with the large restoration of the GEA of about $1.1 million, that really went a long way to giving us a meaningful increase in our state aid. So, we were able to go up by $2.2 million. As we had noted, because the state aid was higher, that gave us the ability to lower the capital exemption number, and that in turn translates into one of the lowest tax levy increases that we have seen in many, many years. We are, based on those calculations, looking at a point, 0.45% levy increase. That's $287,000 for the overall budget. If you look at the tax rates, what does this translate into? I do, you see I've underlined early estimate. The towns have not even finished putting in all of the changes to the assessment rolls. So, based on the information that's in there now and where they're projecting, and where they might be adding additional parcels and putting in additional exemptions, we're looking at this point at a 0.21% increase in the actual tax rates. So, even though the district will collect the 0.45% because of growth in those assessed values, it will only feel like a 0.21% increase. And I know in Bethlehem, they still have some commercial additions to the rolls that they have to put on. So, depending on how large those are, that would cause, any increase is going to cause that percentage to go down. So, stay tuned for updates as we get closer to the publication of the Highlights newsletter and then all of our required disclosures, but-
Judy, just before we go on, are there any high tax surgiaria pending from the previous year's reassessment? Still, that might be a potential?
There's a high volume of properties, but most of them are smaller dollar amounts. We're in the process of getting those figures updated from the town because that's going to allow us to set the final amount of the tax surgiaria reserve. That'll be one of the components on the fund balance, so. And that's going to keep going on for months.
Okay, thank you.
This is probably one of the more important data slides that we've shown each year. And if you look at the yellow highlights, what we've tried to do is give you what the four-year average. As, at the time that I started with the budget process with about a $7.8 million deficit, over those four years, it shows you what the average budget-to-budget increase, as well as the four-year average of levy increase. And if you compare those four-year average to what our 10-year average are, you can see that we've tried to be, as well as the board, good fiscal stewards with all the program, educational programming and financial programming for the district. The 10-year average being around 5.02% for budget-to-budget costs. This budget that we're presenting tonight, actually for 15-16, actually has a 1.66% budget-to-budget cost, which is almost about 3.5% lower than the regular 10-year average. And then, as Ms. Kehoe indicated, you know, the 15-16 has a potential maximum allowable tax levy of 0.45%. That's, as best we can tell, it's the second lowest percentage that would ever be presented to the public. And I think back in 1980s, there was a negative 0.1% at one time. So, the combination of that being almost four percentage points lower than the average tax levy increase over the past 10 years, shows, you know, a strong financial picture, as well as planning to deal with the effects of the economic recession. And it also shows, most importantly, what the gap elimination adjustment really means to schools. Because even with this budget, we are still owed almost $2 million more in aid from the state. That, could you just imagine what our budget picture would look like if it was fully restored this year? So, that gives you sort of a rundown of the historical perspective. And then, you know, one of the big things is, as we've managed our financial plan over the past four and a half to five years, we were trying to come off of about $2.5 million in fund balance. And we set a goal of about five to six years as being that stepping off process. Well, the, our goal going into this year, if the gap elimination adjustment was to be reduced significantly, was also to improve our financial picture by removing the fund balance. The presentation that we're doing tonight will now go to that recommended bottom bullet of going to zero use of fund balance, so that we're no longer relying on our own funds to support the budget. That's probably about two years ahead of schedule than what we were planning on. And hopefully, with the financial picture of the GEA coming in the future, that if that's reduced next year or even over the next two years, that will be fiscally beneficial to the district.
Judy?
Several weeks ago, you had approved a resolution that authorized the district to do a refinancing on the bonds called an advanced refunding. And as part of that, we issue an official statement, and we have our credit rating reviewed. And I have that call with the rating agencies this coming Tuesday. I'm really looking forward to that call because we have, as Dr. Douglas mentioned, a wonderful improvement in our overall financial position. So, every year, we do try to budget conservatively so that we're never caught short on the funds that we need to support our operations. And based on our current projections for this 14-15 school year, we will probably have a surplus of around $1 million. So, for this projected fund balance number, you can see from the yellow highlighted row of the $9.8 million where we ended up last year, adding a million to that puts us to a $10.8 million fund balance in total. So, from there, we need to allocate that between the various reserves, making sure that we comply with the limitations on those various reserve amounts, based on their established purposes. And this is really our best estimate at this time of what we would see in those amounts. The retirement reserve has the largest increase, where we would be able to bump that up to about $2.6 million. And that will help us if we encounter future volatility on the pension rates. We've certainly lived that before, and it can have a dramatic impact on our totals. We put in a line for the capital reserve. Remember, this is a special proposition on the ballot, and if this is approved by the voters in any year over the next 10 years in which there's a surplus, we can put money into this fund, and this will allow us to have a funding source for future capital projects, which is more good news because it means you lower the amount that you need to borrow and then ultimately save on your debt service costs. The undesignated portion of the fund balance is really the piece that you have available to help you manage cash flow throughout the year. And that is required to be at or below 4% of the subsequent year's appropriations. So, that will be below 4%. And right now, we're predicting that that will be about $3.7 million of our total of 10.8. So, again, projections, we'll update them as we get closer to the end of the year and the audit of those numbers. This shows you what your revenues will look like if we approve a tax levy increasing at 0.45%. It includes the $2.2 million increase in the state aid, and you'll note the lovely zero on the recommended use of fund balance. That gives us total revenues of $94,162. So, what you'll see in the coming slides when we're looking at the expenditures and what our alternatives are, the number, remember, the object of the, our mission with budget is to get our funding sources to match our expenditures. And that is what we're seeking guidance from the board tonight, so that when we go back and make all of these adjustments, we can present a final budget for adoption next week, based on those choices. So, at the last meeting, you had asked the question as to whether it would be possible or whether it would be recommended to make additions to the elementary faculty levels. The baseline budget that Jody Monroe had presented for the instructional program had included an increase of three positions. There is an addition of 0.6 to allow for the special classes, PE, art, and music that goes along with that. And it was felt that that was a responsible recommendation with the growth in resources that we had. But you asked the question, what would these alternatives look like? You could do an increase of 2.4 FTE, and that would allow the students to stay primarily at their home schools rather than being bumped from one elementary building to another based on late registrants into the district. You could go up to 3.6 FTE at a cost of about $256,000. And that would yield smaller class sizes across a broader spectrum. Those costs aren't insignificant to put those additions in. The district's recommendation is that we really do believe that it will be sufficient if you stay with what was in the initial budget proposal with the 3.6 FTE. We really feel that that will enable most kids to stay in their classes, maintain them at reasonable sizes, and is fiscally responsible. But we open it up for board comment and discussion and your preference-
Really, one of the issues is, this is in response to board's question from last week, from that, as we address primary class sizes, which is the ultimate foundation of education, those class sizes tend to get lower. And that, how could we balance the intermediate class sizes to either bring them lower or get them so that they're more balanced across the district? With five schools, the only logical way is you'd have to add staffing to a certain point. There's no way to possibly address everything in regards to the staffing levels needed for the numbers of each school. So, we managed that after April 1st by being able to move individuals around. With the original base budget that we have proposed, which is just 3.6 additional staff members for the primary level, we can pretty much do that. And yet, as the students move through the intermediate levels, they're up closer to what's known as our guidelines, and we have control of that at this time. It's really a discussion for the board whether you feel we need to look at that intermediate level. So, that's one of our discussions. We have each of the plans already mapped out with what we'd recommend as reductions to balance out the budget. At the baseline budget that we've always been talking about, we already have that balanced to, I think, around $205. I think that's the next slide, actually. And what happens is, this is just what we're proposing. And the four lines that you see up there, in order to balance this budget at the 94-162, we would end up having to make sure that we made some reductions out of our additions. And we've identified that we'd pretty much reduce and eliminate the telemetry. One piece of the tech readiness proposal that we've been looking at over the past couple of years is we had $300,000 in there. We'd look at reducing that by $120,000, which allows us to keep moving forward, but we're still not where we should be. But it's okay. We're getting to a point that will be beneficial to the district and where other school districts really haven't traveled to at this point, and where state ed is saying that we should go to when they're ready for online assessments. This can be beneficial for the district, so. And then also, we propose the literacy coach, but because we're putting a major emphasis on staffing at the primary level, that the literacy coach, we'd probably want to prefer to take a year to look at what the impacts of the RTI staffing, as well as the additional primary staffing, would be before we'd recommend that. So, that would be a reduction of 71. And we were able to go through our BOSI's requests, and we were able to find an additional $34,000 that we feel we should be able to save through proper budgeting and looking at things that maybe could potentially have duplication or overneed by the district. So, that would be our baseline budget, and that would balance out with just those reductions to any of the additions, as well as an additional reduction to what we are already cutting from the budget from last projection to the 94-162. And I think we're off by about $205, which, as a rounding error, that's zero.
I've already rounded.
So, that's one. Really, the discussion is then, the next slide is what it would look like, additional reductions if we added the 2.4 to the budget, because that would be an additional cost, or the 3.6. We'd have to make additional reductions to some of the items that were proposed. So, we'd probably turn it over to the board to give us some guidance at this before we make any final adjustments.
I believe it was the elementary principals who wanted the focus, was not their request to focus on the primary grades, K through-
Two.
Three? Or two? And that's where additional resources would be put towards, would be towards that, right? Are we subject to-
In our baseline budget, that is where they're targeted.
I mean, always subject to, if you had a huge spike in the fourth or fifth grade somewhere, that you may have to reallocate staff and change those numbers, but yeah.
I'm perfectly happy with the first proposal, with an additional elementary for the primary grades.
But I appreciate it, looking at, you know, the other options as possibilities. Appreciate the work done to do that because, yeah, sometimes when you see the bigger picture, it's, you know, makes things a little bit more clear. But I'm also in agreement that- But I'm also in agreement that the recommendation that came from the elementary schools and the principals and administrators and Jody, you know, I'm supportive of that.
I'm happy with proposal one. And there's three of our elementary principals here. And they sort of, you know, walked us through the reasoning behind those primary additions. I mean, I think it looks really good for the numbers. And I'm also really happy about the RTI investment because I think that's also going to be really important for the elementary level. I, you know, those I think are the top one or two priorities. You know, I think that's great. I'd love to add more, but, you know, I also worry about sort of coming out of the gate a little too strong. And then we're going to have to pull the reins back next year. And, you know, no one wants to see that, but sometimes that's the reality. So I'm really happy. And I appreciate that you kind of went back and kind of looked at it all again, but I'm in good shape.
I agree. I think that the first proposal was adequate. And hopefully next year, if we get more gap restoration, we can look at some additional staffing. But I agree with Joanne, I don't think we want to overextend ourselves. And then possibly, if we don't get gap restoration next year, be in a predicament, so.
And there are still strings attached to the money right for here, too, so.
Right.
That could be affecting cash flow.
We'll go with the.
You get to the final word, we'll develop the budget.
Well, let's also, I guess, is there any other ads that we want to readdress as the board or not? I think we're set on the elementary proposal, though.
No, the only one that I, and I know there's a little, a little writing underneath, but I was convinced about the literacy coach. I understand we're doing multiple things at once. And let's see sort of what the impact is of the investment, you know, both on the RTI and the, you know, the primary teaching staff. But, you know, I think that, you know, I was pretty convinced when we met with the, you know, the reading program staff and, you know, I think that's a really wise investment. The more we can backstop our teaching staff, give them resources, give them additional help, which they clearly indicated is important to them, you know. But I get it, you know, we, we'd like to kind of take things in stages and that's okay.
And I think, to help out a little, as we go through the year, if we feel that there is a need, we do have some options within the budget that, remember, it doesn't cost as much as you're going through the year. But if we had to look at it, then we could, or then we really defer until the next budget cycle.
Jody, are you comfortable with not having the literacy coach?
Yeah, I think that we don't have, I think we're in a good position with our curriculum. We've been doing the Common Core for a few years. It would be certainly, you know, nice to have something like that, but I think, given the other additions, the classroom teachers were, were really the priority at all levels. And particularly, the elementary is getting a good number of, with the RTI teachers and the classroom teachers, I think that will be really helpful. But we will certainly continue to look at that option moving ahead in the future. But I think, given what we're able to do this year, the classroom teachers are definitely the priority.
And then, would we have 4.6 RTI? What do we have now?
4.6.
We, we have reading teachers and we have math, AIS teachers that travel. So these teachers would actually be elementary teachers. We would look for people preferably who, I mean, it could be open to current classroom teachers, which would be great if some people are interested because they're familiar with our curriculum, but, so they could address the literacy aspect, math, or right now, we don't do anything with writing, so we could do that as well. So they would actually be elementary certification.
And I just had a question on the 4.6. You feel really confident that that's a good number. Is it a number that we chose because then they'll remain in the building? Or is it definitely based on, because I'm looking at it from a conservative approach, I don't want to get 4.6 and we really only needed three. I guess that's where I'm looking at it.
That's based on our numbers we have this year and also students we're currently not serving, particularly at the younger grades in math. So that's how I arrived at those numbers. Certainly will evaluate that as we go through next year. We do sometimes, for example, we do benchmarking and we do child study team ongoing throughout the year. So we have, we do have situations at times where a teacher may have to end up traveling to a different school that they didn't begin with because numbers fluctuate. And that's the, that's really the goal of RTI, is getting kids direct intervention and getting them out sooner rather than later. So ideally, it'd be great if there wasn't a lot of travel, just because you get the most, you can service the most kids. But if we have to have people travel, and we will still have some people traveling next year regardless, we would do that based on the numbers. But that's right now, unless we had a large increase in need next year or really sharp decline, which I don't expect, I think that number will be appropriate. Thank you.
Anyone else? No? Then it's a go.
We'll prepare the option one for the next budget meeting for the 24th for approval. That is also our night for our BOSI's administrative vote for the budget as well. So we'll correspond both of those in the same evening. One of the things that we also want to remind everybody that included in this budget, as we're obligated to do for the community, is that we are continuing our capital outlay plan for the 2015, 16 school year. That would be the high school pool phase three, which is roughly $100,000 in the budget. And this is a transfer to the capital fund. This will help to provide some additional equipment replacement, more interior finishes. And also, this project would be eligible for building aid from state education, approximately about $68,000. So we're obligated to make notice of that. So if the budget's approved, the capital outlay and the state aid would be approved to go along with that. In addition, a recap of some of the propositions that will be out with this budget cycle for the annual election is that, you know, upon approval, you'll have the BCSD budget adoption, which would be the first proposition. And then there'd be a second proposition for two, three-year Board of Education seats. You'd also have the bus purchase proposition that would be up on for the election that we mentioned earlier and we'll talk about in just a minute. And then also, one of the propositions would be the authority to establish a capital reserve fund. And it's important to note, it's to establish the capital reserve fund for savings. It does not mean that we would be initially funding it unless we have surpluses in our end-of-the-year budgets. So although it has up to $10 million of funding, it would start off at zero and we're not asking for any tax levy in this proposition to help fund it. So that's an important note, and we'll make sure that we communicate that in our newsletter. And then also, remember that we have the Bethlehem Public Library budget that will be on the election cycle and the voting machines. And they also have not only the budget for adoption, but two five-year trustee seats that are on there. So to go over the last two one more time to make sure that we really drill that home for the public, especially for our public TV viewers, I'll turn it over to Ms. Keigho and then she'll wrap up with some of the end-of-the-year dates and questions.
Sorry. I wasn't sure that we had, we're finished here, but I did have a question on the IB program development training, the $100,000 in the budget. And at this point, I just feel that we haven't had enough information to really, just my personal opinion, to put $100,000 into the budget this coming year. I'd like to be a little more conservative since we were fortunate enough to get more aid back this year, but I would want some more information on that program.
One of the things is, in June will be a presentation to the board. We have another visit coming up for the IB. Just because it's in the budget doesn't mean that it would necessarily be expended, depending on the board's discussion and decision on moving forward. But it's to budget for the potential, potential option of the program. If we don't, that would be money that would be ending up in savings for next year and would not be expended.
That would give us an opportunity to talk about other programs.
Yes.
So is it 100 or is it 80?
In this proposition, it is 100.
Okay.
In the others, we'd have to reduce more, so we were going to take it from there.
Okay.
And again, I think I said at the last meeting, I think we need to look at all the programs that are available for students so that we're not missing any particular group of students. You know, the IB program, whether we're looking at new visions programs, Tech Valley High School, you know, anything that may be available for students to see, you know, to see what maybe the larger community might be acceptable of. And this would include, you know, high school staff and students and parents.
No, I agree with that, but I also think the IB program development funding is absolutely right on the money of where we should be looking to go. We want to take it to the next level with our program here. And, you know, we have a really good academic program. I think the IB program, and if you have a kid who's applying to college right now, you hear that at all the competitive colleges, you know, that they are attracting students with IB degrees. So, you know, I'm glad we're looking at that because I think it does push us up in another level. But I totally agree that we also should be looking at, you know, some of our other programs for kids that aren't even going on to college to help them position themselves, you know, entering the workforce, you know, to also be at the top of their training and their capacity. That's, you know, absolutely the right thing to do as well.
Hopefully, our next, this budget cycle, and hopefully the next budget cycle, will allow that. If everybody stays along the path of the fact that they said, they will eliminate the GEA next year. I think it holds great potential for Bethlehem as well as many schools. But what happens is, you know, we should set that as a goal for the next year to do that programmatic review.
Yeah, absolutely.
Of CTE, other options that at one time were part of Bethlehem, and at this point, we're just starting to rebuild. This is kind of an opportunities budget to borrow from the governor. We don't often do that here in Bethlehem, but it is an opportunity budget for maintaining and maybe moving excellence forward here in the district. But again, the money wouldn't be expended unless authorized. And that money is an estimate of what we think we probably need in the long run. We may not even need a quarter of it. But if it gets built into the budget and it's something that the board says, yes, we would want to do that, it helps when you go over the two-year training and implementation period to have money possibly already built into the budget for any potential staffing that would be needed. Because the year-to-year cost for most of the districts we've seen has been about $22,000 to $25,000. It's the one initial coordinator supervisor that would be the issue that you'd need to monitor that type of program and the scale of the program. Depending on how it sort of makes its way through the development stage. So last couple, if there's no other questions?
We will have a bus proposition on the ballot. We are looking to retire 10 of our oldest, tiredest buses and hopefully be able to replace those with eight large and two small buses. We are required to get voter approval before we can make any capital expenditure. That amount of $1,027,000, if approved, does not affect any of the other budget totals that appear on the ballot on the 19th of May. Again, it's just to give us the authorization to purchase and to finance that purchase. The capital reserve, I had talked about earlier, again, it's a maximum 10-year life and a maximum of $10 million. And multiple reasons why this is a great benefit to the district going forward as we're planning to make these replacements on our capital items. And future meetings, April 21st, this coming week, I will take the directions you have given us and put those into final totals for you. I will draft up your property tax report card, which will have to be submitted to the state within 24 hours following adoption. And then that will allow us to prepare the budget highlights newsletter so we can help spread the word to the community for those who haven't been riveted in following every single meeting that we've had closely, so that they can be informed. And we hope that everybody will exercise their right to vote and come out and participate in this process. We do have a meet the Board of Ed candidates night scheduled on May 5th here in the high school cafeteria. And then the following night is the public hearing on the proposed budget for additional community input. And then the budget vote on May 19th from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. here at the high school.
And Judy, you had mentioned two seats. When is the deadline to submit petitions? If anyone's interested, we should just.
It's Monday, April 20th, no later than 5:00 o'clock according to district time in the district office.
Which is very accurate, thanks to our new clocks.
Yes, it is.
And if someone wants a petition, they should see our district clerk.
Yes.
Okay.
We got back with no problem.
All right. Well, thank you, both of you. Next, at this time, the board has set aside this time for anyone in the audience who would like to address the board or make comments to the board on any agenda item. Anyone? Next, item eight, finance. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action, item A. That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Many thanks, this is the second donation.
Oh, this is the second one?
Yeah, this is the second $10,000 from Paul Wing, so that's.
Substantial donation.
We are matching it with our budget at this point for the renovation of a STEM, STEM room in the tech wing here at the high school. I know Greg is also finding some money within his budgetary lines at this point from energy savings that we've had that I think will have a very good start for the beginning of the next year with that program.
So that motion carried. Next, item number nine, professional personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following instructional staff action, item A.
So moved.
It's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that item carries? Item number 10, correspondence for action. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following correspondence, action items A through B.
So moved.
First and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that item carries? Item number 11, recognition of visitors. At this time, the board has set aside time for anyone in the audience who would like to address the board on any non-agenda item. See you in none, we'll move on. As previously stated, the next Board of Education meeting is next Tuesday. Let's note, we should make sure it's noted and maybe do an SSN, SNN, because it is on Tuesday. Again, I think that's a legal requirement, right, that we meet that deadline?
Yep.
So it's next Tuesday night here, 6:00 p.m. executive, 7:00 p.m. public. And then the, after that, Tuesday, May 5th, as mentioned, is going to be meet the candidates night here in the high school cafeteria. Then there's a, May 6th is the next regular scheduled board meeting, again, 6:00 p.m. executive session, 7:00 p.m. public meeting. And then we'll have the vote on May 19th. And I have a, do we, I think we need to go into the executive session to discuss that? No? Okay. All right, no? All right. No, we have no need to go into the executive session?
I move to adjourn.
First and second? All in favor? Aye. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody. And pig students, you can come up and sign out.